Hey, everybody.
Hey, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
Live from vacation.
Ah, very nice. Let's see if I turn this up a little bit. Audio settings. There we go. Can you guys hear me?
No.
Yeah, Bill, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah. No. You're not.
All right, let me turn up the television volume.
Okay. Is that I can maybe get some. Are you having trouble hearing me?
I have trouble hearing everyone.
You're good, Bill.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Great.
I have a secret weapon, if not also. We have one, two, three, four, five, six. Very nice. Okay.
Yeah, so begin every meeting with the meditation period, yeah.
Zoe, good.
Yeah.
I'll open up this meeting of the mayor's planning board. Today's date is July 8, 2025, and the time is 7:05 PM. Zoe, are we recording?
Yes.
This this meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means that members of board, the public, or the applicants can participate here in town hall or virtually through the Zoom link. And please note, this meeting is being recorded. Let's turn to. They want to do.
Yes, I'll save it. I don't want to enter.
Let's turn to item three point one. This is a public hearing for One Summer Street. So I will open up the hearing for One Public or One Summer Street. This is this is the application by Donald Development for a special permit and a site plan approval for One Summer Street using the downtown over play district. And section 10.4 of the zoning bylaws. Bill or Zoe, do you want to give us a briefing on this first before we turn over the app?
Sure, I could do. Let me do it, Zoe?
Yeah, please, if you would.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. This is property. One Summer Street was formerly at the town fire station. It's a preexisting structure and is within the DOD. In the business district, not the central business, interestingly enough. In this petition is for site plan review and a special permit for redevelopment of structure because they're proposing eight units of housing and under the DOT, under DOD, a special permit is required for that. Site plan review is because there's a changes in the in the exterior layout as well as request for parking special permit. Which I'm sorry, is the special permit is for parking. The site plan review is for exterior changes. This is a a former town owned properties, you are all aware. The governing documents are in addition to our zoning bylaws and planning board rules and regulations, there's a purchase and sale agreement, which I think I've circulated and which dictates many of the terms as well as a development agreement that has been executed between the town and the select or the sub board and the developer. This was the developer came in response to an RFP that was issued by the town in 2024 and it's you may recall, there was a previous proposal for this property with this very similar layout. When the original sale was approved, I think by town meeting. And it was by Blackrock, which ultimately was withdrawn, but this is more or less a very similar plan. With the notable exception of the mixed use component in this case is a proposed car museum. And in the earlier version, there was it was unclear exactly what was going to be proposed there, but it was probably retail office use. So all in all, it is very consistent with the RFP. That was originally the plan. It was originally submitted by Blackrock Gallery as well. With that, there's a couple of questions I've had in five members about any waivers requested. And while the applicant will go over those, I think one question that came up was about the photometric plan. An applicant requested a waiver and it was the board had requested the plan. So I have relayed that to the applicant's engineer. We also have tonight, we have executive director of municipal services, Steve Silverstein. And I specifically asked Steve to come here in case there's any questions about the the basic RFP or the purchase and sale. I think everything's pretty self explanatory, but I thought since, you know, it might be easier than this. And with that, the last thing I will I'll point out is that we have not received the designated peer reviewer for this project. The applicant has been provided three proposals, I believe, and I'm sure that's something that will be addressed tonight by the applicant, Mr. McDonald. And with that, I think that's pretty much everything. Zoe, did I miss anything you can think of? Oh, affordable housing. There's two units proposed as well of the eight. I'm not sure. I'll have to defer to. I've been out of the office here, but I'm not sure if their buy down was completed. There was a potential to buy down one unit. I'm not exactly sure where that is. Perhaps Mr. Cranshaw or somebody can fill us in on that. But I think I've covered the basics. Preexisting structure, limited exterior changes, more question of use and and just integration into the downtown.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Jack. Would you mind introducing yourself and anyone else that might be participating tonight?
Excuse me, James McDonald, McDonald Development, my daughter Jackie, Jeffrey McDonald.
And we have our engineer, that's my Paul Kirshner from Stan Stansted, who will be presenting on behalf of our group today.
Paul present?
Yes.
Steve, has the PNS been signed and executed?
It hasn't.
Is there a DA on this?
There is.
Has that been executed?
It has, yeah.
Excellent. So the PNS has been executed, the DA has been executed. Does Conscom, are they required to go to Conscom, Bill?
They they are. They are currently before conservation for stormwater waiver. They just went to that meeting immediately before this one. That's continue pending further peer review comment.
I'm happy to turn it over to you guys for the presentation tutorial.
Absolutely.
Do you need to use PowerPoint or anything online?
That might be helpful. Look at a plan. Is there somewhere you prefer me to stand?
It would be good if you could come over here just because the microphone is here and it'd help for us when we do our minutes. But I can also bring up any of the materials on the screen here.
Yeah, just.
Share the screen.
Any pages, site plans, fine. Sheet three.
Yep. Just think this without breaking.
I can get into it anyway, while she's bringing that up. So as Bill summarized, the proposal is to convert fire station into eight apartment units and a 3,000 square foot antique car museum. Right in the center of town, everyone's very familiar with the site. Their modifications proposed to the building is primarily interior. The exterior of the building is going to remain largely the same. In terms of site improvements, the biggest things are access to the structure and parking. Accessibility for the museum space as well as the residential component of the building and then parking to serve both uses. To very, very tight site. 18 parking spaces are required for the zoning for the proposed use. We have submitted the site plan that includes, well, originally, we submitted a site plan including 13 parking spaces and propose to locate five of the spaces offsite at 10 Main Street. More recently, we did receive some comments from board members where we have made some changes to the to the site plans so that that parking calculation has changed a bit, or I should say the locations change. We're now showing four of the parking spaces on Summer Street. We are proposing some modification to the edge of the driving surface in order to accommodate the proposed parking. Or also proposing the narrowing of the throughway that's on the front side of the building at the intersection. And that was recent per person comments that we received from board members. I use the term driving surface because we are proposing pervious favors here to replace the asphalt in order to reduce stormwater runoff leaving site. We did submit a stormwater management report that showed that there will be a decrease in impervious surface at the site. And I think it's important to note that that number provided in the application is treating the pervious papers as impervious surface. So in reality, the pervious nature of the property will be even more substantially yeah, increase, decrease, however it is that you would prefer to look at it. But in terms of site coverage, we are proposing a reduction to that in order to minimize impacts to the town. It'll actually improve stormwater conditions of the property. We did submit the conservation for stormwater permit. They can, they need as they want to see the peer review come in, which will be shared between the planning board and the conservation commission. We have submitted utility connection plans to the DQW. As far as I know, we're still waiting to hear back from them. In terms of other changes, I think we summarized them well in the materials that we submitted last week. There were a couple of things brought to our attention at the conservation meeting related to the operation maintenance plan for the forest favors that there's just some discrepancy between two of the plan sheets and then the document provided in the stormwater report. So we will make the necessary adjustments to that. But I think the application really sums it up. I did see a couple of board members provide a comment, which I'm prepared to discuss, but I'm not sure if you want to take the lead. I'll do it again.
I think I find it helpful to have a structured conversation based on topics. If that's okay with you guys, you can start with traffic flow, pedestrian patterns and things of that nature. And then maybe other topics could be lighting. Traffic focused training, lighting. Landscape, landscape, egresses. And so on. Says some reasonable. Could you just walk us through the traffic patterns in and around the site? Using the site figure on speed. I'm sure Zoe was allowing you to use the. Now, Sid, do we just?
Sure, that might be helpful. Thanks, Zoe.
Was in here?
If I could. Just to Oriana, some is going to go back to sheet one. So this is the fire station set the intersection of Acton Street here. Summer Street here, Main Street coming in this direction. So it really sits at the intersection between Summer Street and Acton Street. Two A traffic in both directions, right?
Yes.
So there are. There's really only three sides to this property. And there are roads on two of those sides. So it's sort of a corner lot to the extreme. Here's the existing conditions plan. You can see what I was talking about. This sort of gray boundary line that I'm aligning with my cursor here is the property line. A portion of the intersection is actually on the project site. And part of the agreement with the McDonald's is to provide a permanent highway easement, which I'm tracing with my cursor here. We actually are in process of creating that easement right now. And that's to, you know, accommodate the intersection, but primarily it's the traffic control box and the the streetlights that are on the subject parcel. Here, so streets on both sides, there are concrete sidewalks on both sides of the property here. The the curb cuts serving the site currently are over large because they were accommodating fire trucks. The three main overhead doors are right here where I'm holding my cursor. There's another overhead door over here. But this is certainly the was the primary access point. There are a few other doors. I'll get into that when I talk about proposed conditions. So this is a site development plan, but I'm actually going to skip to the layout plan because it's a little bit cleaner. So.
And sorry, Paul, can you zoom just a little bit more as you're talking through this?
Yeah. So part of our proposal, as I mentioned, is 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 parking. We have an accessible space proposed here on the Acton Street side. And we have a number of spaces proposed on the Summer Street side here. We are proposing the rebuilding of the concrete sidewalk along Summer Street and the concrete sidewalk along Acton Street. The portion of the sidewalk that's at the intersection itself, we are proposing to allow to remain. And that was really at the suggestion of Wayne Amico, the town engineer. He did provide some comment. He had identified the the Acton Street, Summer Street, not the intersection. I think that's appropriate. If you if you look out there, it's it's evident where cars are more or what where cars are driving over.
Sorry. Yeah, to these, to be a little more specific, it sounds like it sounds like this project, you know, we place sidewalks in accordance with DQW's recommendation. That was that. There stays it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Part of that sidewalk replacement is is modification of the curb cuts. Currently, most of the Summer Street side of the property is just one extended curb cut. So we are proposing to clean that up, new sidewalk with a defined 24 foot wide curb cut here to provide access to the parking shown on this side of the site. On the Acton Street side, the sidewalk is proposed to be rebuilt with the modifications to the curb cut here are are minimal in terms of the extent. And that's in order to provide adequate access to the accessible space here as well as the dumpster shown right here. Moving down towards the intersection, we are proposing narrowing this up. So there is what looks to be a cut through in front of the building now. We're going to make it narrower. So it's 14 feet wide. And that's to serve as a one way delivery area. So Amazon truck or whatever it may be in cut through, stop, jump out, drop your packages, pull onto Summer Street and go wherever it is they're going. So that helps to reduce impervious and, you know, initially we had showed some parking there, but it gets us out of the the highway easement that's being granted to to the DQW. So in terms of actual access to the building from the parking spaces, primary resident access is the is the front door. And then the primary museum entrance is on the Summer Street side right here. So to the right of the the overhead doors. The accessible pathway, we do have a handicap accessible ramp leading to the to the residential entrance. And there's another door over here to provide access, accessible entrance for museum patrons. Visitors to the museum can enter the doorway here via the parking lot. And we are relying to some extent on the sidewalks to to transport pedestrians. So, for example, from the accessible parking space, if they were to go to the front door, exit the space, travel along the sidewalk of the accessible ramp to the to the front door here. If a resident parks in one of these spaces identified here, what number, five through 12, travel along the sidewalk to the front door up the stairs or using the ramp to get to the to the front door. We also have a bike bike rack shown in front. By bicycle storage. Biatically. There's that.
There's a good question. Turn to the questions. Questions.
The primary entrance to the residence is in the front. Is there another entrance in the back? It seems there's a the ladies on that and looks like lady of the conference or body per game. It's not.
There's no door there, but it's on the backside of the building.
My only other question was those three parking spots directly across what you're talking about. I'm sorry, 10, 11, and 12. Just in terms of like the traffic flow, are they going to be backing? Just trying to figure out how they're bad. Are they going to be able to back up far enough to be able to go back out into traffic or are they going to back up all the way down to the front of the?
So this site is very tight.
Yes.
Obviously. I wouldn't characterize this as a luxury parking lot. I don't think you hear much about those, but those are my own terms. I 12 is probably the most difficult spot. The expectation is that you can back out. It just might be a multi point maneuver in order to to nose out into the street. The expectation is not to back all the way out onto to Summer Street. Like maybe we're. Yeah. We're we're trying to to maximize the onsite parking, but certainly we're constrained. So we we've had to come to sort of a compromise here in terms of the layout because there's just very little space available.
And then my other question was the door for the accessible entrance to the museum is in the you know, strike area next to the ADA spot. Is that a problem to have the door bent up into the ramp?
It does open into the aisle.
Yep.
It's not a permanent fixture, the open door.
Right.
Which is my perspective.
Also, looks like a door opening into parking spot six.
Yeah, so that one I actually don't think opens into the spot. So we show the line between five and six, but we don't show the what's effectively the nine foot offset, the other side of parking space six, I could say. We can show that and show the door to show that it's not going to hit the hit a car. It is certainly close.
We've got somebody in the waiting room.
Other questions? I got a technical question from Bill. So Phil Namsa.
Yes.
Those are recently passed bicycle storage zoning requirement, line of space. I don't know which came first.
I don't think we've received the AG's final approval yet.
We have not.
So then it could, but as of now, it would be up to the board. But the AG approval has not been officially passed yet. At least we haven't received it.
Regarding that handicap parking spot, seems like I don't know. Kind of picture how this the driver of that will pull into that spot and then safely out of it into Acton Street. I wonder if there's any.
Oh, yes, I was going to ask about that. With the curb cuts like on that side, I was having trouble reading. And so maybe you zoom in.
Yeah. So this was the curb cut where I I tried to communicate. The the modification of the curb cut is less substantial than other portions of the site. So there's a crosswalk in this location right now. You know, that's this is more or less the the edge of the existing curb cut. And then it sort of just continues through to the to the rounding here. For the driveway serving the adjacent property. So we are proposing to rebuild it, but that extent will remain. It's sort of an odd configuration right now where there's curb on both sides, but it's flush with the road. So we're going to clean that up, but this will be, you know, this full length will essentially be a curb cut. So in terms of maneuvering, if you're traveling south on Acton Street, I mean, the intent is essentially you pull in here and then back into the spot. Coming north on Acton Street, you can see that's more direct approach to the spot. And then in terms of exiting, I mean, again, it's 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 a tight, tight spot. But there is some room to to maneuver here, a couple point turn. More or less get yourself oriented 90 degrees to the roadway and and exit the site in either direction. So we're trying to make the best with the space available. In terms of location, the want to provide access to the to the front door because that's the residential access point. So locating any accessible spot in this portion of the site, it's just very far away from the from the front door. Spots five and six were, we looked at that in terms of pure location, I would actually prefer to put the spots there, but the grade is just too substantial. It exceeds 2%. And modifying it would is really not possible given the location of the overhead doors. So the Acton Street side, it's a flat area. It's reasonably close to the to the accessible ramp. So it feels the best spot.
Other questions?
I guess on the same topic, just tight spaces, number seven and five. I mean, seven. I guess it's a parallel spot. Both. Both those spots. Both those spots almost seem like you. You're asking for people that accidentally parked on the sidewalk. To some degree, block pedestrian. Uh. Flow, I know double that with other applications recently, it just seems like. I get that there's not a lot of room here, but you said there's some parking that's being provided offsite.
Yeah, ten main street.
Is there any more parking that could be provided offsite as opposed to? Jamming in. Uh. Spaces here, doesn't seem that functional to end of that.
Well, seven, seven is still a eight foot by twenty-two foot spot, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it'll be a. As always, an enforcement issue, is there anything happening, so the curb cut clearly is. Not. Is, you know, to the right of spot seven. So is there gonna be anything between spot seven and the sidewalk, like? I don't know, um.
That is not part of the. No. Separation is proposed at this time, there will be a distinction, because you have concrete sidewalk and paver um driving surface. So visually, uh it'll be evident, um. Usually it feels a little bit different when you when you pull off of a concrete surface onto paper. Um, if you're moving at low speeds anywhere as you're parking, maybe it's a little less um evident, but I I do think you still be able to to feel it. Um, it is a twenty-two foot deep space, so. Most vehicles are not occupying that entire length, um. And then it's i- i- similar with five, um obviously not as long, it's nine feet wide, standard size space, so um. There, uh, of course, you know, some of the parking requirement is proposed to be fill the ten main street, there's some space over there, we do wanna maximize the parking onsite, because that. It's just better for residents and visitors to the to the to the building. Um. But uh perhaps more spaces could be a lot of that ten main street for this project if. There are concerns, um. Really to the proximity to the several.
I would suggest regarding. Space seven possibly inculcating more of a sidewalk that. If those spaces are striped similar to, and you see. U T C P standard striping with the eighteen-foot car spaced in the four-foot. Um, X out between cars. Then if the four-foot is exited on the front of every space. Then it's. Clearer where they're coming from. Rest.
Think that'd be, but there's plenty of room. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, works for me.
I don't think the board has any concern about parallel parking there, we just don't want to everybody think that could cause a societal. Right, so we should mitigate that, because that sounds a good, good idea.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can do that.
So that would put extra for a thing. Like the bottom, looking at it as it is now at the bottom, maybe some of those parallel parking things.
Yeah, they split straight off. Great. Can you stripe papers? Hmm, that would be close.
You can stripe them, the board looks and God at me wouldn't like it as much, but you can't have everything.
There might be another way to do it besides striping, the point is, you just want to make. It clear that.
I was about to suggest if we can look into the different color. Brick, but I can't say that tonight, because I think it's not possible, but if we can't. We just change the color for people.
Yeah, some sort of.
Yeah, I think you guys get the nature of the comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, maybe it's not exactly any T C P in striping, but. Don't think that is it. You know, very.
Yeah, and we'll at least use that as uh inspiration for our solution.
And the spots that are on Summer Street, that was a change I saw, um. That I love, I mean, I. Obviously, there was no. Free parking there because of the fire station, um but. I. Didn't get screened. D P W likes that, they're on board. Right.
Well, you never know, but.
This is. Yes.
So, uh, that's a good one, regarding those spaces, uh, it's the the project will measure s- stripe those spaces, is that the concept here?
While we will change the color of the brick or.
No, on the street.
Oh, on the street, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Are you guys proposing to do the stripping on the road?
Yes.
Those parking spots?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh. We don't need parking meters there, correct?
No.
Okay.
No. No parking meter.
Go fill there a couple signs and. Part between the side.
Mister Chair, may I ask a question regarding the uh Summer Street parking, please?
Sure.
Uh. Jimmy, and um. Paul, uh, can you? We're talking about striping on Summer Street now and utilizing the uh parking spaces. Um, on a town property, so there's a process, we're gonna have to go through that, can you tell me what we've done so far? From this change, I mean, have you spoken to D P W, I imagine this select board has to sign off on this. Um, can you just give us a little bit of a background on this new change?
Yeah, uh, to be honest with you, we received the comment that this might be a good solution, and we brought to the board, you know, we already submitted this revised plan a week ago. And uh. Before we do any more. Would like to know what you think, because if if you don't like it. Then it's not worth pursuing.
Uh, well, from my standpoint, I think it's a very good, uh, it's it it's a very good use, and it creates new parking for the town, but. I just want to be clear that this board, or certainly myself or anybody, is not empowered to. Authorize this, so it's something that we would have to um. Run. Certainly, I'd start with D P W and then through the select board, uh I don't know exactly that, um. That I don't know what they would say, but I I I would support it, but I it's not something that the board can um. Authorize, this board cannot, and um so if you, my suggestion would be, we're gonna have some time after this meeting, um. Perhaps the thing to do would be, uh, we strategically meet and figure out how to utilize these spaces, if there being um. You know, it's creating inventory for the town, but on the other hand, it's being used for the project. That's one thing, on the other hand, uh, a downtown overlay district project. Um, recognizes. The um desirability of. Shared parking, utilizing public parking, so in other words, what I'm saying is that, um. Uh, parking like this. Connected with the commercial component would probably be far more practical. Uh, from an approval standpoint, um than it would be if it was to make the. Residential work. And and I think that in this case, we have another property uh nearby. That um if I'm not mistaken, uh, ten, uh, was it eleven, ten, eleven, Summer Street? Is uh has about two extra parking spaces right now. Um, and you're proposing, you know, we we could. Make sure there's adequate parking for all the residential. Units on private property, that's how I would be inclined, that's what I would think would work on this. Uh, and uh. I this, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself on this, um but I I would put that out there.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Regarding that on street parking and the. Sidewalks, as far as I'm concerned. That meets the D O B special permit criteria. Are better than any project I've ever seen. Down, down. Um. And since the. Museum. Requires six faces. I mean, I think it's perfectly fine that. You know, they're just creating or. Open it any public use spaces on the street, not reserved, but I think there's a technicality, if. It goes to our approval of a parking waiver. Those aren't counted as the site, they're just. Waiver only talks about things obviously.
Right.
As far as D O B, I can permit criteria go, it's. Checking all the boxes.
Yeah, but yeah, I think it's a great point, Bill, uh y- y- you see, I the the the, I think that that's the key is the way to. Frame this and that, and it does, it works totally for the best interest of the community and the project.
Do you have any advice on how to proceed regarding these parking spaces on the streets?
Yes, the beginning of what was the uh.
Sorry. Well, big picture, we can talk later, but big picture is that obviously plenty more cannot approve. The space is being used and striped in town, but they can be counted towards special permit criteria. So we can use it for the special permit, but obviously we don't have the voting for temporarily.
We should, though. Okay.
Uh, Steve, I'm I'm sorry, Mister Chair, is Steve uh in a room now, I can't see under.
Yeah, I'm in the back here.
Okay, um, Steve, perhaps that's something um you could. Talk about this week, maybe, and then when I get back, we can.
Yeah.
You could check in with Lisa and with with Justin and just figure out how we get this, because I think that's a great. I think this is a great possibility, and and as long as we could, um. You know, utilize the mixed-use project, utilizing shared proper uh parking, creating new public parking. Uh, I think it's it's cool.
Yeah, the the next step would be just to speak about it with the the town administrator's office, you know, the select board's office. We could loop in D P W, but you know, public rights of ways under just she got this stuff for us, so.
What I, could I request then, until I get back, you could maybe get that? Me and Zoe could probably just do some preliminary on that, and so we can hit the ground running and fix this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it'll have to be next week, calls, you know, the town administrator is out until Monday. As is the head of D P W, but we'll. Lay the groundwork.
We'll check with Lisa, yeah. Cool.
Uh, to be clear, these public. Proposed public parking spots, it does not look like they are impacting any crosswalks at all, am I seeing that correctly?
That is correct, yes. Uh, two through four. I mean, this is more or less one big curb cut, so no crosswalks there, um and then. Number one, essentially is in front of the property line between these two properties. That there is a no parking sign right here, but. I. Feel pretty confident saying that was from one of the fire department occupied the building.
For sure.
Uh, there's a crosswalk on Acton Street that. Looks like it was teasing to. Then. Backside.
Uh, yeah.
Right, so. Um. Do you do you just walk me through the? Her cutting there?
Yes, so, uh. This might be better communicated via detail. Uh. So. This is uh Acton Street. Right here, where this is the building. Uh. Here's what I'll refer to as like a normal portion of the sidewalk, six-inch curb reveal. Um. Ramp down. To to the curb cut begins here, coincident with the edge of the crosswalk. Uh. Curb cut extends across to the adjacent property, so, um. Of of course, this whole space will be pitched towards the roadway. Um, but. Uh, this stretch of the sidewalk will be essentially flush with the roadway with that pitch.
It's within the curb that floor of the entry.
Yeah, exactly, uh and and that was uh something that we could, how do we improve this, you know, we're looking at replacing the existing sidewalk and. Although the actual construction of it right now is a little odd with the strange pieces of curb in the middle of the concrete sidewalk, um in terms of the extent of the curb cut, it's. It is logical, so we're proposing to match that.
And additionally, I mean, we're parking back there on a simple. A D A space.
Right.
While open to control, it's not like it's gonna get heavy used by the tenants, um. Or, you know, it's, I guess, times of this, but it's not gonna be us who left them. Right.
So on typical properties. That are not as challenging as your. Uh, the parking lot and your fast spaces. Need fronts, fronts, right? Sometimes that's. Uh, how can people know that, that you've got spaces? There. Some projects, a sign that says handicap. Parts of space that matters.
Yeah, we don't currently have any post-control, but some sort of signage would.
I'm not saying it's not a sign, but I do wanna highlight that.
Yeah.
We do want people to know.
Yeah. I mean, there will be a sign at the space itself that identifies it, um. But that is.
It may not be necessary, but maybe.
We'll we'll consider that.
And can you walk us through the dumpster? To the dumpsters, this says dumpster structure. Yeah, walk me through what that is. Then. What the traffic background will be.
Yeah, so it'll uh. Essentially be a shed enclosure, um. To screen it from view from the roadway, uh, and the intent is, trash truck picks it up, backs up. Continues on Acton Street, they will have to come from the south in order to make the pivot. Or be heading south, I should say.
So from the north facing south.
Yeah.
Down the.
Yes.
That was the front, yeah. Don't show. That where. Fire L C S there, place area.
Yeah, I don't know if they think they moved their rounds, if they ever had a next spot or not. Since, same to me like this. It was the second key, but the hands, it started.
I'm looking at a book, it's a very good going. You hate trash.
Uh, we could consider, so. Uh, so this would be an enclosed structure with.
Yes, this will be like a little shed.
Jimmy McDonald trash it? But a miniature, yeah, there's only eight kids, yes, right.
Hey, Paul.
Yes.
Um. How many spots do we have calculated? For residential? Right now?
Twelve.
Twelve, is what we 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 figured, and but are the twelve of those twelve between? Uh. On-site parking at one Summer Street and um borrowed parking from uh, I. I think it's ten Summer Street, I attend uh Main Street, um. Can we say that there is? The residential parking is accounted for on private property, based on the calculations? I don't have it in front of me, and I've been out, so you have to forgive me on this.
Yeah, we have, um. We have ten spaces on. The private property. Um, at one Summer Street.
Okay. And then the other two we could pick up from. Ten Main Street theoretically.
Right.
If the board, okay. All right, that's, thank you.
Sorry, go back to parking spot number seven, uh. Uh. I'm a little concerned about backing out next to the building that's adjacent onto the sidewalk with flying. The pedestrians coming on the. Sidewalk. Um. Uh, just give me a. Not a great feeling. I think we need to look at. How to. I don't know.
Would seven be backing out, or would it be pulling forward to turn around in front of the overhead doors? I I mean, I know you don't know.
Yeah, so.
There's space to do that, right?
Yeah.
There's space to pull forward and then.
Right, just as you would with parking space eight, where you. You know, get out of the space and then probably back out to get out.
I know this is extraordinarily tight, I mean, is there a way to? Put a. Couple of. Ballards like right at the sidewalk line at the edge of that. I I don't know, I wanna prevent.
All right, I. I know where you're getting at, because the, some people, the inclination, they might just try to go straight over the curb, because people. I know where you're getting at, because the some people the inclination, they might just try to go straight over the curb, because people. Any crazy thing you can imagine they will do um.
And that shows that is a curb cut right there, right?
Yeah, the the uh this is the edge, so this will be like the the a ramp. Um we can look at providing some at least. At least something that a driver would notice, so whether that be a a bollard or just. A lip that they would feel like it would prevent the car from rolling um where we can. Look into that.
Other questions on? Vehicle pedestrian flow.
Uh how how does the. Spaces being utilized, this may be a better question for Bill, you might have to go and look at this, was there. A special permit for parking at ten main and by allocating spots from one summer to ten main, does that affect any? Special permit at ten main for parking?
Well, the approved plan for uh ten main. Uh is I believe it's for uh forty-four spots. Re- required. But the plan does note forty-six, so um. At worst case, I suppose there could be a minor amendment if the board chose to um. Uh grant a special permit to allow this request, that would be the cleanest way to do it. And it's something if the board decides to go with this, they could just do it at this meeting. Um I would say that the the I would be very hesitant to go below. The required number of uh parking spaces at ten Main Street without. A further analysis, but at this point, uh that would remain consistent with what was approved by the site plan, and I think it was twenty twelve. Um we've had a number of changes uh regarding. Parking in the downtown overlay district primarily um with the idea of reducing. Uh unnecessary um impervious surface and um also recognizing. That uh one and a half spots per parking unit may not always be practical and may in fact. Be created in excess and 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 so the board does have that. That leeway, but that's a good question, Chris, and my suggestion would be. Uh the two spots um would be a minor amendment. Uh in my opinion, but the board would have to determine that, and that would be if just to keep it tidy. Um and that would allow the board to say, okay, well, we have um parking. Consistent with our zoning bylaws uh for the residential units and uh the public benefit would be created. Um by adding um the um. I get we might call, I just call it public spots, you know, on Summer Street, that'd be my opinion.
Other comments on?
Is one other approach looking at the parking owners might be recognizing the fact that the D O B. Presidential requirement is higher than anywhere else in town. Um because it was never updated, well, maybe updated the rest of the town. So if you look at the records from the rest of the town and apply it here, you have a ten instead of twelve.
Well, and additionally, I mean, the one and a half parking spaces per unit. We've had flexibility with that in the past, and additionally, when we have required offsite parking for other projects. I don't know what you guys are anticipating in terms of actual concrete parking, you can't know that much ahead of time, but um. You know, you have other properties and you probably know, we have had uh people come back to us. We will, we've had a check-in right with for the condo on Main Street, I had a check-in. And they said, it turns out we don't actually need the actual parking and they requested relief from it later, you know, after a period of time. Figuring out what people needed, so did you think that there's, you know?
Yes, excuse me, when I built manor place that's on Mason Street, I had to rent. Uh spaces, that's when this first started and uh we never ever used it, then we went back to the town.
Yeah.
Then. Uh then in this particular property of uh. Ten Main Street, it's like fifteen, I parked fifteen of my antique cars all across the back all summer. And we didn't have one complaint about not enough.
And he lives there.
And I live there, so if we if we take those fifteen cars and put them inside the garage here, we just. Living at the same place in town that's got so much. We need to. So.
Okay, can we move on to landscape plans? Are you, are you? Did you, Paul, did you prepare the landscape plan or did it sum up so nicely?
I did not prepare the landscape plan, I know where the landscaping is.
Um but. Are you?
We don't hold ourselves.
You feel comfortable walking this way with scape and frame? I'm looking at Jackie.
Bluetooth connected.
It 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 can be a passive, you don't have to.
No, you asked me to.
Yeah, so this landscape plan was prepared by Elizabeth Morse, who has done several of our landscape plans for us. Um it was updated by me, us. Based on some feedback and changes to the plan and we weren't going to get it in time. So I just used the same plant type. Um and relocated some of the plants. I didn't come up with any new plants, because I'm very much not a landscape architect and I don't know um. So the landscape plan right now. She is very, Elizabeth was very clear that. Because really only the thing that matters here is this the landscaping, because some of it might be inconsistent otherwise. Um so what was updated from the original one was I changed the ramp, how it was shaped. And I uh extended the landscaping. In these directions to accommodate and reflect what was on the engineering plans and then I. Uh moved around some of the plants that she used and tried to match some of the colors and I updated the quantities of the type of plants, I can't really speak to. The plants, um just that I that they're probably mostly native and going to last and. Our other sites that she's done landscape plans for came out beautiful, so.
Um I'm I'll make it easier and help you.
Okay.
It looks like there's a bike rack.
Yes.
Close in the front area.
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
Originally, that was out here somewhere when we had parking along here, but we just moved it. So you can still drive through the aisle.
Um I mean, not good with the Latin names and all this, but it looks like there's some cherry trees being proposed, do I see that correct? Some of these are trees, I think, right?
Yes, the trees ones are the large, uh the trees are the large round, they're one, two.
Are there any trees on what side?
I don't believe this, oh, no, there's overgrown. Hedges.
Okay.
But no trees.
Okay. Um. And it's not required, would you be willing to, if I pass this along to the tree committee, just for their advice on trees, uh tree species?
Yeah, um. That's Justin, right?
Uh he's the tree.
Tree warden.
There's, he has a food command in town and folks do.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, just.
He's worked with Elizabeth before on.
It would just be advice on what type of trees she's uh. So that it's.
So I'm with that.
With the town sort of landscape, their properties, but also there they'll think about um longevity.
Yeah.
Right, you said. Okay. Again, then it would just be advice, it's not at all. Any questions on landscape plan?
There's one paper on your plan list, probably.
It's not a big.
Sorry.
That's the one thing that I know.
Yeah, is it? Okay, well, sorry Natalie.
No, no, I'm I I.
Is it the the name or?
Japanese written, yes, it's a U.
U, yeah, yeah, I noticed that too. Yeah, because it says U in the handwriting, it says U.
I was like, I don't know what that plant is.
Oh.
Okay.
Uh one is I just wanted on record that this is the landscape lands that people that watch and assume that it's. Um. And we turn towards, I won't show you, um we turn towards lighting. You just walk us through the lighting plan?
Yes. So I'll show you in a moment, uh we do identify locations on the plan. We have, of course, requested a waiver of providing a photometric plan, um which is uh naturally the. The board's call. Uh we. Jimmy and I have discussed providing one, um the intent is to provide uh. Lights that are, this is the. This is the one I'll look at, right? Um covered, so dark sky compliant, um we have them shown over the overhead doors. This entrance door, we do have one shown over this door, even though it. Will sort of be like a phony door, that'll look like a door on the outside, but actually doesn't provide any real access into the building. Uh front of the building. Uh at the overhead door on the side and the um. The accessible doorway to the museum next to the. The accessible parking space. And at the rear of the building near space thirteen, just because there are no other lights on that side, so. We didn't submit a photometric plan or request a waiver, but the intent is covered lights, dark sky compliant.
Um all doing all of them will be the same light, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, dark so dark sky, dark sky compliant. Same length, right? Um I think this could be a simple photometric plan, now we. It's gonna be important, um just to show that we don't have light to meet an order. Upper boundaries to uh.
Okay, that's it, it was the key.
Okay. So no security lights being proposed at all?
Uh.
Where are the streetlights?
We're running.
I'm not sure where the streetlights are.
Is there is, so.
Doesn't look like. Doesn't look like. I look by the back of this. I don't know where they are on someone.
Why are they on the intersection?
It's always. It's very bright down there.
Yeah, it's definitely bright, they just don't recall.
They're just looking on Google Maps.
No, I don't. Um, all right, all right. Is it your understanding that there's no streetlights adjacent to your property?
No, I wouldn't know, to be honest with you, but it's very bright there, I've never seen it, never felt that bad, so then. I don't know where they at, I think they're. From the church, yeah, I asked, because it was town property, so we could have put light bulbs. On the town property, right?
Yeah, there's, there are none on the property. Uh. It looks like there's one across the street in front of the church, but it doesn't have a bulb in it, at least according to the few-year-old street view. Um.
It's me, my speed cars.
Yeah.
It was one in front of the church in the corner of Main and.
That's my.
One McDonald's.
Yeah.
But there's not on the property.
Right. Oh, yeah, one one process.
It one thing to consider, uh the. Sidewalk on Acton Street, so the right side of the building, so you're. Um we we should just take a look to see if that's. Dark and may could use a little illumination on the side.
We can look into that.
That's it, otherwise, you know, the way I'm seeing this lighting. There seems to be good lighting. And if there's an opportunity to provide a little bit light in here on the sidewalk, that could be.
Looks like there is a. Light mounted in the corner of Plugging Street, across the street from uh the overhead door on that, yeah.
Yeah, that's the the nearest one I see, I'm looking is a.
Yeah, just something to consider.
Here's. Yeah, Pleasant looks like the nearest.
Okay, then we talked, any other questions on lighting?
Uh I have one, Mr. Chair, um just uh any exterior lighting, we would just, I would ask for a um. Some sort of uh of spec so that we have it, because we will have to periodically shield. Um any security lighting or stuff, we've had that come up time and time again, so I. Think that would be good if we have something that can be easily adjusted if there's a a glare issue that's unanticipated.
Okay.
Nice question.
We talked landscape, we talked uh traffic, well, pedestrian patterns, entrances. Uh lighting, um and it looks like you're proposing two affordable units uh out of eight, so that'd be a twenty-five percent number. Did I hear that correctly?
Jimmy and Jackie want to speak to that better than I can.
So we're in limbo on that number right now, uh we're required one. And we are working with the Affordable Housing Trust uh on the second one, so we don't really have a final answer on that quite yet.
So one's required. One or two will be proposed for final answer, are you considering sixty percent unit?
Yes, for the second one.
For the center.
Well, still, let's say eighty percent, but we'd never finalize uh about sixty percent. Um negotiations are still. Still up in the air, yeah.
I think this, uh as one board member, I would be open to. Um discussing one for the unit sixty percent as well, or two or four of the units have been told involve a reasonable options for us. But I'm I would be happy to hear what the housing board has to say.
The housing trust is continuing the discussion, this is sixteen. No, my third. All right.
Uh am I missing any topics here tonight? All that we covered, about everything. I think.
Um. Let me just flip through my notes a little bit here, there's one. The waivers are the biggest thing, I want to make sure that we discuss. Uh one of the waivers we're requi- we requested is uh the requirement to show all drainage within five hundred feet of the property. I don't think that's necessary in this case.
Are you making a change to the drain drainage?
No.
Do you have any comment on that?
No, not thus far as to what I've seen.
Are you comfortable with that waiver?
Yeah.
As a consequence.
Yes.
And that requirement only to show the existing drainage, it's. That's it, show, so. Um we but we are not proposing any modification um. The other topics.
You you asked for waiting for traffic circulation impact study. So seeing on the waiting list.
Yes. Yes.
And does anyone have any concern about that?
Normally I would, but since they're redoing all the sidewalk. No.
I would be interested to see some trying radiuses, but. Like you said, it's a tight site, so. You know, I guess. As long as everyone can get it. Uh you know.
We can um provide a graphic for maybe a few of the spots that seem most extreme, so to speak. Um. The my expectation is that one or two will be a couple points, I don't expect a hundred-point turn, but.
Yeah, that's my my concern is a hundred-point turn.
Yeah.
Just inevitably ending up hitting someone else, so um.
If I if I second that, I think, see now.
Yeah, we we can provide some graphics on the one.
I would say parking spot seven. And twelve.
Seven and twelve.
Um I would suggest. Seven, twelve, fourteen, maybe that's what.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay. I don't need, yeah, I don't get pleased. It sounds something for. Generally, it's fine with the. Favor for. Having circulation actually. I would say just a symbol. Now that's the way we're saying here. That is the exception to the rest, so the. I have a couple requests. A couple requests will. A couple to do's, I think, to see if I'm sure. Something I would like to see is just a. And it can be sort of drawn on a, like this, but just. Where are, what sidewalks are being replaced to, to, to the extent that is there exactly at the property line or. Or, for the record, it's just a good for us. Okay, be there sidewalks would be.
Yeah, we'll do some hatching or something, whatever it is, yeah, just to make it clear that way.
Clear what sidewalk street, also not. So we don't put it to three. Okay. So figure showing sidewalk replacement, it'd be good to probably have the. We gotta figure out parking counts and exactly what the requests we need parking, so have the department. And so on that, just so that next time. Know exactly what parking counts for looking for.
Yes, um, yeah, Paul, that, that's a good, good point. I was just typing that up as a matter of fact. What would be helpful, um, because we're going to be bringing this forward, obviously, to other. Uh, entities in town, and, um. I think it would be very helpful to give a breakdown of, like, basically just spoon feeding. What is being provided on private property and how it meets the residential. Um, requirements, and then for the, uh, new spots that we're proposing to be created. We link that, and I can help you with this, we link that to the D O D. Parking requirements, where they specifically talk about, um, shared pro- parking, and that that is a, um. Uh, a goal that the, the town is trying to achieve, so in other words, just wrap it up in a neat bow. And, uh, so the board's clear, not just this board, any other boards that we, we, uh. Bring this before, which probably will be a select board at one point, so just, you know. For, I mean, my notes say, um, you know, we have, if we have, we have twelve spots required for residential or whatever. Uh, we say, okay, ten will be provided at Summer Street and, and two. Um, at, at, at Ten Main, under this, you know, where we have the, uh, offsite parking, and we just cite that. And then, um, the second one would be, okay, we have, uh, I think it was six spots that we said were required. Uh, for the museum, um, typically this board has been very, um. Cognizant of, uh, the, the, the. The D O D parking, uh, shared parking goals, and I don't. I, I, I think the creation of the four new spots is a, is a value added completely. Uh, and I think the waiver of the two spots or, or the used shared parking for two spots is a no brainer for the town, I think. But I, I, but packing that up in a neat paragraph or two would go a long way. That makes sense, Paul?
Makes sense, and, uh, I'll coordinate with you, uh, to make sure we're on the, okay, before I make any formal.
Sure, sure, and, and, and I won't be back until next Monday, but Zoe's in, in the meantime too. And can help you, but, but that would be, uh, and the second thing is, uh, obviously, um, do you have an idea, um? This is, I guess, more for, for, uh, Jim and Jackie, but, um, uh, the peer reviewer you want, or will you get in touch with us and let us know?
I'll, I'll get to that in a second, Bill.
Sorry. That's all I got.
Then, uh, could, um. Be, I would love to see some trolls in parking spot seven, so then. Yes. That will protect it. We did not talk about into signage. And you can have a handicap sign for the handicap spot, of course. There any other, any other signage in seconds required?
Uh.
I wish, I should say.
Yeah, I believe we have signed, uh, those on the bill. Was that just graphical, architectural one?
Yeah, it's just graphical.
Okay, so not disregard that. Um.
So no, no signage, it says residential, part of it in here, like that.
Yeah, I suppose, so. What we've been discussing is that it would be, uh. It, it wouldn't. Maybe it wouldn't be appropriate to designate street parking for residential use, so if that's the case, and we're saying that, that, the residential spaces are. On the subject property, do we then? Need to put signs that say residence only, we assign the spaces to the residents. It gets a little bit complicated, I think, but.
Decide to the public parking spaces to do, so it's.
Right, so it's pending. Right, and if you have a tenant, you know, I own spaces one and I share two with.
Sure.
My neighbor, because I own one by five, it's a little strange, so, um.
Just a. Drop off area in the front, the directional. Side into.
So you don't have idiots trying to come in from Summer Street?
Or is it even bad if they do?
I think our department did it, Paul. The delivery companies.
Okay, for that reason, but.
Because those delivery guys will pull in. So he's gonna come in one way or the other way, but it's, it's gonna take the easiest path, and that's gonna be easiest path. But I think that's gonna work fine.
I take it back, not idiots, sorry.
Not easy?
No.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, development agreement does stipulate that, uh. The developer will install wayfinding signage, the idea was, you know, related to the cultural district or where, we'd actually discussed. And had been consented to, to have electronic signage. Town has since backed off that position, so I don't know if this. Relevant to this part of the conversation, but. We can't put up, uh, cultural district or welcome to Maynor, with, of course, the veto of the developer, you know, or. Approval, subject to approval, developer, etc., on the side. If you could just talk with Bill and town staff, otherwise, if that needs to be included, this decision I have to. They might, well, they could argue it both ways.
So, I don't think it was just gonna be where the whole water come. Some sort of.
Larger sign or.
Uh, some, it would be there.
Yeah, he was, I think he was gonna say, we thought we were just talking about. Signage for the residents or something about the, um. Yeah, there's all kinds of signs. No, that's, that's a possibility for that, or, you know, area. Yeah, for the front, yeah, for the trough, you see, isn't, yeah, even.
So what would the sign say that was there, but if you. Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if it means for you, brought here, um, Jack, it doesn't actually need to talk to you, to discuss you. Find that out. Um, okay, um, you, you guys need to choose a peer reviewer?
Yes.
Okay, so just let them know.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll get a peer review. I'm thinking, so I'll take this time to open up to public comments. Uh, Zoe, if you mind helping, um. So for members online, if you'd like to make a public comment, if you could use the raise hand feature. Or, um, just turn on your video and raise your hand while calling one at a time. So if you could stop, but sharing, of course. Um, any public comments here in room tonight? Zoe, I can see this, but just so you can confirm, there are no public comments online?
There are no public comments.
I'm thinking, me, there's not enough time to continue in two weeks. Thinking the first meeting in August.
I believe that's August fifth.
Um, I think it's August twelfth for us, because we're in the second Tuesday of the month. Unless we have the schedule.
Yes, you're right, the, the.
Is that right?
Yes.
Um, does that sound memorable to be able to get material back to us with two weeks of view? So, period needs to be chosen, updated points need to be submitted, that I review. That's something we don't time.
Yes.
That's over a month, so that's. Is that what we want to do?
Yes.
Yeah, please, okay. Um, any final thoughts from the board before we continue? I'll make a motion to continue to August twelfth at seven P M.
Second.
All favoring for the continuance, please raise your hand. Five zero to continue to August twelfth, thanks guys for coming in for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Um, I will open the public hearing for. Uh, reporting on Parker Street. It's, talking about the pre-existing natural structure that will be used as a senior center. I can, I can. About this, okay, wait till. No, I think Chris knows about it. All right, um, so this is, uh, this is an existing commercial. Uh, building in the industrial district, uh, one forty-one Parker Street, it is directly adjacent to the Maynor Crossing. Complex, um, it has, uh, it's in current use in, as an office and medical office suites. Um, and the, uh, developer who's here with, uh, their civil engineer this evening. Um, is proposing to, um. Repurpose part of the building for his senior center, and. So what's currently before the board is, um, special permit. And also site plan review or, um, reconfiguration of the parking area to accommodate. Will accommodate that use. Um, and I can pull up some of those plans if you'd like. Um, the developer and civil engineer are both here, so let me. Pull myself first and then. I'm here at the screen.
Actually. I, is there any two gentlemen here for this during? Uh, would you mind identifying yourself directly?
Of course. I was moved up here because I'm not very loud.
Yes, please do, I'm just gonna share the screen so that you can have your plans up here, so it doesn't be one side down.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody, my name is Lil Ho T, I'm a project engineer at G B R, both from President Ringwall. We're an engineering company representing, uh, Express Parker LLC. Here will be tonight, this is Matthew Blackham, who is representative of the applicant. So, uh. See you here.
Is there, do you want me to pull the site first?
Uh, let's start with the site plan. Alrighty, perfect. So. The art, uh, project parcel you see in front of you is one forty-one Parker Street, one forty-one Parker Street has a driveway access. All the Parker Street, uh, located on the bottom right-hand corner there, coming in. Um, at the front, you have an existing parking lot, um, taming. Sorry, hard to see there. Approximately twenty-three parking spaces, a couple accessible spaces at the front. You have an existing one-way access on the right-hand side there. That leads you to the back of the site into the rear parking lot. Um, as it stands. Sorry, I didn't just pull up the number. As it stands, the existing site has seventy-three parking spaces. The proposed project, uh, is proposing to reconfigure the rear parking space. So that we have, will, they'll bring the total to seventy parking spaces on site. So. Purpose of the project is to reconfigure the rear parking space to provide room for the. Uh, redevelopment of the ground floor level, um, highlight or shaded right over there. For the proposed senior center. The proposed senior center, uh, will be approximately five thousand square feet. Um, replacing the existing, um, bank drive-through. Um. Open-air bank drive-through that is there, uh, today. Um, as part of the parking lot reconfiguration, you can see that we're also expanding the one-way. Um. At the south there into a two-way, allowing traffic to come in and out. Of this one-way existing access, um, that it is today. Um. We are proposing landscaping to go with the reconfiguration of the parking lot, obviously, see on the screen there. Um. With the reconfiguration of parking lot, we are reducing the total site in previous area by approximately twenty-one hundred square feet. Therefore, reducing the sediment load onto the existing, um. Drain structures on site. Um, just to speak quickly about the existing drainage structure on site, there are, um, you know, several catch bases on site. Servicing the, the whole site and getting it to an existing basin located on the right-hand side there. Uh, the basin appears to be. Um, collecting and treating sediment, saltwater, and infiltrating them on site. Before overflowing and discharging onto a covert, um, on the bottom right, on a screen there. Um, under Parker Street. Um. The proposed project is here for a site plan, uh, review for the. You know, the parking lot, but obviously, we're also here for a special permit modification for a special permit that was previously approved. Um, I believe at the time that the special permit was approved previously, where a large apartment spaces was greater than what it is currently. Um, I believe back then, the required number of parking spaces was eighty-nine, where there was seventy-three existing spaces. Um, ever since the, the amendment made to the Maynor Zone Bylaw, that number of parking spaces has been reduced to eighty-two. For the current environment. Therefore, we're only shy, uh, for parking spaces. Um. And that's why we're here, this was a part of modification. Um, I understand that we sent out, um, requests for pay review. We received two, three pay review, um, proposal back, and still waiting for one more. Um. Obviously, generally speaking, you know, we believe that the scope of this project is very limited, so mainly repavement as well as putting a new sidewalk. And reconfigure. Reconfiguration of the, uh, ground floor level portion for the senior center on the building side. Um, we would love to avoid having to go through a peer review, but obviously, we're not gonna fight it. And happy to answer any questions, Matt.
Thank you, uh, I have a question for Bill and Zoe. Um, this is a special permit because it's within the, uh, the. Well, ground wire script, correct?
The water supply protection. Well, y- yes, but also, there's, they're requesting a modification to a previously issued special permit that allowed parking relief.
And that was a special permit for use?
Yes, for the medical office use.
And what is the use of a senior center? How does that fall down our zone?
Well, um, we asked the building commissioner to do an analysis of that, and particularly about how he felt that the use would affect. Parking requirements, and that was included in the staff report. Um, which I believe that in his calculation, that the, if you were to consider part of the. That, that, this five hundred square feet to, uh, have some business use in the sense of, of programming rooms. And then also a function room space that might be considered a place of assembly. He estimated this base requirement to be a little over a hundred spaces, however, um. So I can, actually, I can pull that up too.
Just to, to be clear, my question is, what is the use in table, table A? Of Arizona bylaws for this for the senior.
Uh, it would come under communities.
I thought it was me.
Bill, do you have a sense of what's going on?
Uh, now I can hear you.
Yeah, I mean, all I'm seeing on my uh, computer is I'm seeing uh, myself. Uh, Deb, Peg. This Paul Pecan.
Oh, this is Amy, Amy.
Yeah, I'm I'm not, we're not coming to the meeting.
Okay, no, they just lost the internet at Town Hall. It'll be up in a second.
Okay.
Can everybody else hear me on here? I don't know if everybody else can or not.
Uh, Mary Ann Shields can hear you.
Okay, I just got a text from Town Hall. I thought it was me. But um, uh, they're they're having some trouble with it, so I think it should be right back. Hopefully. Everybody else can hear me. Let's see who else is on here. I see uh. Paul, Deb, Peg.
We can hear you.
Okay, so just we'll see, let's see, uh. I'm texting Steve right now. He said there's. Something happened. It just dropped off.
I can hear you.
Excellent. And I'll I'll just tell them I've got everybody on. Here.
And I can tell you all, we're getting terrible storms out here, so hopefully I won't lose power.
Oh, yeah, it's storming there. Oh, I'm up in Maine. It's um. It's just hot. But uh, I'll uh.
We have nothing here in Maynard.
Okay, I'm telling them I got everybody here and we're working on it, so. Tell them that. We're working on it. That's terrible when this happens. It could be worse, though.
Can anybody see that I'm there, Mary Ann Shields? I my name has never shown up on the screen, but I'm on the participants list. And I see I'm talking.
No, your name's on. I can see it.
Is it on there? Oh, okay. I haven't seen it, so. Okay.
Okay, let's see, internet is down. They don't, they're not sure how to reset it. Okay, let me just uh, make some calls to them and all.
Bill? And say, Amy, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Bill, so if, are they able to continue the meeting?
Yeah, they'll continue it, but it might have to be.
The most important thing is if they're able to continue the meeting so that um, we don't have to reschedule this part.
No, 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 they'll continue the meeting. No worries.
Excellent, good.
Steve's trying to check it right now. Just hang tight, give us a minute here. And we'll see. What, Steve?
Oh, well, they're they're proceeding, you know?
Yeah. Oh, they already started?
This discussion. Yeah, yeah, they haven't stopped.
Okay, discussion's going on, Amy.
But they are cognizant of the fact that everybody is still waiting. It's just, I don't know what the hell happened.
Uh, if you un, did you see the little box, I mean?
Yeah, so he told me not to touch it. She said it's the.
Oh. Um, well, then.
I've walked upstairs to the uh. The mid. Hell room. I don't wanna really mess with this stuff, but.
No, let's see if I'm, let's see if I'm on. Oh, I got disconnected totally. Let's stay here. Let's see if I can get back on. Maybe that. No, I would, I wouldn't sweat it. Um, I would say the best way to handle it is they can call in and we just get a cell phone there. And they could call in. And we have a cell phone and they can. That's probably the best bet.
You want somebody them to.
If they have a question, they can call in on the numbers on the um. Do you know it's on the agenda?
Yeah, but that is.
Pain in the ass, but it.
No, I don't know. That would, I don't think it's gonna work.
Oh. Well, then we'll just say it was gonna go on. Okay, I'm unable to log on to the server there, so something's down.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Now, I can, I have everybody on here, so if you decide, I'm gonna tell them it's it's. Uh, going on and the board will keep going with it. Um, and we'll have to do what we can do. Now, remember, it's not recorded.
Yeah.
So we will need. We'll need Zoe to go ahead and um, record it on the phone or something. All right, I'll let you go. I'll tell everybody right now.
Okay.
Bye. Everybody, can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Uh, it looks like I I I think judging from what I can tell is that the internet is down. At Town Hall. I can't log in down there and I I was logging in remotely, so something might have happened to the server. The meeting is going on. The board is aware that everybody wanted to um. You know, if anybody has any comments or anything like that. So there's two things we can do. We can um. I I think the that if there's a specific question. Um, now, I guess that's a problem for me too, because I can't monitor it. I i if um, hmm. I was gonna say we could call in, but Steve didn't think there's a way to.
Yeah, I mean. So so, Bill, I mean, we've looked at the layout. Um, they've given us the layout. They're reconfiguring the parking. They're telling us that there's gonna be seventy. Accessible spaces on site. You know, so and so. That's great, because I've talked to Matt just briefly about the reconfiguration, adding more spaces. Um, so, you know, the R F P said we needed at least thirty five. They're saying that they're reconfiguring. Seventy. So, I mean, we're up where. Which is great for us, but you guys sort out if the building commissioner is saying you need set a hundred, that's way out of. Our wheelhouse, those of us from representing the senior center. But the seventy that they're putting out there, Lex Fest, and I'm looking at the diagram. Um, yeah. A question I might have is, you know, um. You know, is there an option to put additional handicap spaces in front of the building? It looks like there's two now. That might not be tonight's discussion, but the fact that they've reconfigured to put in. It's what I'm written down, seventy spaces on site is is good, so.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm writing this down, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna relay all this. I think, I believe they're gonna be on this anyway. I I I think that, uh, oh, wait, wait, I just came back on. Oh. Hold on.
Yes. I see it.
I got a question from the engineer or actually anybody. Sorry, give me a pause and say, sorry. Uh, Bill, we're we're all back. Can you uh, can you hear us?
Yes, we we could hear you, and I have some questions that were written down in case we couldn't get back on, but it looks like everybody's. Uh, set up now, so we'll just let you go ahead.
Yeah, we're just continuing to proceed here. Um, but.
Where are the doors? The doors are located. Well. Right there. Are you enter what a central lobby? Is that what you're doing? And then enter the senior center from interior?
There's a central core um, that runs directly through the center of the building where that crosswalk comes into the building. Okay. Um, and that core runs front to back, sets the doors on front, uh, double, uh, double doors on the front, double doors on the back. Um, there's an elevator as you first walk in. Uh, to the right as well as E D A accessible um, men's women's rooms. Um, the main access point to the senior center is roughly halfway um, up that corridor. The inside and everything to the left of that corridor, really everything that's boxed in there would be the senior center. There are uh, posed emergency egresses on the front and the back of the senior center. Uh, but those are regress emergency person.
So I'm guessing. The preserved senior center parking is on the left of our figure. That's correct?
Uh, it's parking anywhere, so it's uh, sure, the whole site sure.
But I'm concerned that there hasn't been enough thought into. Pedestrian access for mobility impaired people from the left hand parking to those doors. It's probably just big old curves and narrow little sidewalks and. I hope they can get a little more.
You can certainly add a few more ADA curb ramps at the corners. Specifically. At this location and this location here. So that if you park in the parking lot on the left hand side, you can certainly get out and then walk up the curb ramp.
And that's. And the lower faces of building, that's all a continuous fully ADA compliant.
Yes.
Pathway.
Yes.
Not the existing of proposed. That I'm quite understanding how we propose next.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there um. There is some typical designation of parking spots for like. Mobility restricted or not necessarily. Any cat, but. I I go to the grocery store and there's a family parking spot. There's something that's similar. For folks that have a little bit more mobility challenges.
That hasn't really been discussed, but if we were to designate a few, I would probably consider, so if you could scroll up a little bit. The spaces on the uh, the top row there. You can see that they're slightly bigger than the other spaces uh, at the center. Um, you know, ten, ten point seven feet. As opposed to the uh, ten point four, so here well, another four inches roughly.
Would you guys be amenable? I don't even know what the destination would be, but would you be amenable to a signage that. Suggests that those are reserved for whatever designation I'm trying to say. So maybe next one, two, three, four, five, it looks like there's in that bay.
Yep.
Is that a reasonable thing to to consider?
Yeah, I was thinking those far as well, this. Before the Allen.
Well, can there be thoughts on the. Problems with.
Cut through where?
I went from Market Basket wrong way into the site and probably wrong way down the right hand drive to exit to avoid the. Ingestion of the market basket. See.
Some vehicles.
There's also some, there's plenty of people come off that way too, to get into Market Basket.
You're saying people coming from Market Basket onto the site?
Yeah, which is a worse safety problem because then now they're. Going there, like going the wrong way, or if they go the right way, they're going through where it's now a heavy pedestrian traffic there.
I can say that that definitely happens. So we we have had that issue, um, and I do think that we've identified the individual that was doing that. Uh, we did close it off for a period of about three weeks, um. And because of that, uh, because it was a dangerous situation where somebody was exiting Market Basket relatively consistently, it was the same part. Uh, that seems to have ceased, uh, did also slow down the folks that were um, traveling through the site. Uh, that's been significantly reduced and we also updated the Google. Um, path to identify that as a private drive because they think a lot of people's GPSes were actually taking that in and through that. And not recognizing that it was private property, so. The amount of traffic over the last. Probably been two months has significantly decreased in that one individual that was doing the illegal um. Exiting uh, has still stopped a little bit.
Was the individual, I mean, phone number.
Or a select one number. Road toward ours.
Well, you know, uh. And then. Do you you do you want to keep that as exit?
We do. Um, we think it provides our our tenants value, not having to go back out and around, and certainly those that are um, visiting senior center. Um, I I believe that was our discussion during the. A policy that we get wanted even. So we did, we wanted that, and we also wanted to reserve the right to open it up to a traffic in the event that for whatever reason, access into our site. Was impacted by that turn lane, so they couldn't let. Let's gain that down. Um, and so we do have a reserve right to do that in the event that it happens and. It unbooked, um, we'd be able to come in through the light and into the site if needed. Starting with a portion.
No, well, so it's interesting.
Other questions come to the vulnerable.
Do you guys keep bike parking? This the same thing that, because it hasn't been for the. I think I'm. Not yet.
May I? Oh, jump in here for a minute?
No, not not. They're just, they're called comments.
There any bike parking on the site for our license? Uh, but Rex.
I don't believe so, and it is a mixed commercial use, so.
Um, Bill, if the. Twin by law path gets approved by the attorney. State Attorney General. Will this, with this protect project required? Bike parking?
I'm sorry, you broke up on the first part, Chris. I'm sorry, the parking.
He was, he was asking whether if our bike parking bylaw is approved, whether this project would meet, would meet that threshold to have a bike parking requirement.
Uh, I believe wasn't all our 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 new uh, our new um. Uh, parking uh, adjustments were all D O D, I believe.
D O D.
Downtown overlay district.
No, I I don't believe that's correct.
No.
No, I believe it's, I believe, but I believe it's for new development. I don't believe it applies to section six.
Yeah.
I could be incorrect on that. I I.
Development is new.
Good.
Whereas three thousand.
If it given, it if it does apply to new development, then. Um. Yes, but not yet, but not yet.
The question's gone. I'll not to follow comments. That appears. like to provide a public comment online, please use the raise hand feature, we'll talk video and raise your hand. Um, we'll start online. Is there any public comments online?
Yes.
Um, I will recognize Deb R, if you could just identify yourself with the record first.
Yes, my name is Deb Russell, and I live on Grant Street. But I also am a patient at the physical therapy that's in that building. And there's quite a few Maynard residents that use that. And so that, that area in the back of the building where the van probably will come in um, has great parking for people who are there to visit the physical therapist as well as the senior center.
Um, thank you, Deb, did you have any further comments?
Nope.
Thank you. Any other comments online?
Any other?
Yes, I, I do have a comment, a public comment. This is, um, uh, Amy Lovelace, I'm the, um, Director of the Maynard Council on Aging. And I definitely wanted to dovetail onto Deb, uh, Russell's comments as well, that, um, I've discussed with our C O A van service driver, um, the best way to potentially, uh, pick up drop off, uh, seniors who might be using our van service to come to the new senior center. And even though we have that access that Deb is referencing, our, currently our van driver drops people off in the, in the front of the building. Um, opposite the uh, physical therapist office, the front of the building, because it's just a better angle where he can pull in and, and get close to dropping the lift down. So the van has a lift that needs to open up, unfold, and, and go all the way to the, uh, to the street level, so Andrew has technically been using the front of the building, so I don't think it'll affect necessarily those parking spaces, um, that Deb is, Deb is referencing. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Um, any public comments in the room tonight? Jack, you're the only one that provided public comment. Hey, look, that was a lot related, Zoe, you know. Um, Zoe, I can't read that name.
iPad. iPad.
Um, okay, I'll recognize iPad.
Hi, my name is Debbie Collins, and, um, I've seen on this diagram here, it shows in the back of the building, there are also that's the front, the back of the building would be, uh, it also shows two handicapped parking spaces on the other side of the building as well. Right there, yeah.
Uh, thank you, any further public comment from you?
Nope.
Thank you.
I'm curious, I'm curious why the flow of traffic is counterclockwise, rather than clockwise, clockwise is the natural means of circling the building, because you try to drop at the front door, and then you get up in the big parking, and then you could exit down the right-hand side to low, now I'm thinking about it, but why is that top module one-way westbound?
Well, looked at that a little bit, the concern is, um, the potential for head-on collision coming out and coming in, I think when people are coming in, they naturally do go towards the back of the building. Uh, or they make the left-hand turn. When they come around the other side, this naturally puts them in a place where they stop, or they make the right-hand turn to exit. So I agree with these. So so here, um, when people come in, um, they're coming into the site and they're either continuing straight back uh, or they're making this left-hand turn here, this is how they naturally come into the site today, uh, watching the traffic flow. The concern here is that if somebody comes around the building here and somebody comes in, you're gonna have people that are getting stuck in this alley, or potentially coming head-on. Um, when they're exiting this way, you don't, you don't have that condition present.
And our concern, because they entered it actually through the bottle closest to parking, right? But it seemed like everybody does it that way.
I have a question on, um, landscape, are you proposing any landscaping for trees of any sorts?
Not particularly trees, um, do have some, I'm sorry, there's one, um, the islands that you see for the parking spaces will have shrub planting, there is one tree that we're posing on the on left corner of the parking spaces, um, generally speaking, the existing site, um, has existing landscaping already, more or less is going to match the same or similar aesthetics as what's out there now.
You're not cutting down trees?
No.
Right, just.
It does say trees to be removed as needed to allow for widening of driveway.
I apologize, uh, those trees will be, um, trimmed as needed, um, it is cutting the curve a bit, um.
Trimmed or will we remove the trees?
We'll try to save them if we can, but if it gets to a point where it's too close, that they'll have to remove.
Would you be willing to replant in, in trees, one for one that get?
Certainly.
Some of those on sites for. Up to how many trees would you may need to remove, do you think?
Worst-case scenario, three.
Three, okay. Other questions come to the board? Um, we will need to continue, um, to, so that period you can get resolved, uh, my instructions appear to be would be just on the general post changes in the use conditions, so I, I will limit this, uh, period view not for the full size, of course. So please let us know, uh, when that can happen. I'll get started. Um, if you could make a note, Zoe, that, uh, we have at least one condition that any trees that are removed from during construction get replaced in time. We and we can continue to our next meeting to extract, I don't think that's enough time to fully conduct a period view.
I don't think so.
Yeah, so I'm thinking first week in August, or for the first meeting in August, so should be August twelfth.
Yep.
That amenable to people?
Certainly.
Any final comments you want to, or we can do? Make a motion to continue to August twelfth at seven P M. On the day that continues, please raise your hand. Five zero to continue, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hey, you're gonna appreciate it. Um, let's move on to items. Anyway, the, um, the special permit for forty, I'll open up the hearing for forty-five Old Mill Road. This is a special permit, uh, renewed or an existing wireless telecommunications tower associated with equipment at forty-five Old Mill Road. Um, Bill, do we have an applicant online tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, if, if you could, sir, could you just please identify yourself with the record?
Of course, my name is Paul Peckins, I'm the agent for Global Signal Acquisition for that are known as Crown Castle, based out of the Houston, Texas office.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Peckins, did I get that correct?
Yes, sir. Are, are you able to hear me correct, good?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Bill, do you want to give us, or Bill or Zoe, you want to give us a quick brief on this? If there's anything besides that is supposed to start a permanent renewal?
Um, there's a, there's an addition of equipment. Um, I, I mean, Bill, do you, do you think that there's anything that of particular note that the board would want to know about this, besides it being the relatively straightforward renewal?
Yeah, this is a renewal where there's been some new equipment, uh, added, uh, one of the zoning bylaw requirements, um, for renewal is a, um, uh, a test, uh, uh, testament from a, uh, a, uh, structural engineer, uh, to the integrity of the, um, the tower and the equipment. Um, staff believes it's, it's all been provided as in the package, uh, I don't think there's really much else, um, to add other than that, um, it, uh, there was some little bit of a, uh, renewal issue that we'll try to make sure everybody keeps on top of. And I appreciate the applicant's, um, cooperation, uh, with the town on this. But, uh, I think this, at this point, is, uh, just a simply a structural renewal. And, uh, now that we have the, uh, engineer has attested to the, uh, improvements. Uh, Mr. Peckins, is there anything else that on, on the, um, the tower that I'm, I'm missing here that's different or that the board would be interested in?
No, like you said, it's, it's pretty much a straightforward renewal, um, you know, in, in the application, there was a very detailed narrative that went through all the key points related to the bylaws. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions, there are two points that I would like to make. Yeah, just in a sense to get them in the record, I, I take that back, there's three, uh, that our application does meet the criteria of the bylaws, that the tower does comply with all state and federal regulations. And then finally, an approval of the application is in alignment with the nineteen ninety-six Telecommunications Act by allowing the carriers to continue providing service and eliminating a potential significant gap in coverage. Uh, those are key just simply because, uh, it is the mission of the carriers to continue to provide service out there. It's been there since two thousand and three, it is a backbone component of your wireless network connectivity. And residents, businesses, and E nine-one-one responders rely so heavily on that equipment, so I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to make sure that we get that covered.
Thank you both. Uh, Bill, is the applicant current with, um, any fees or licensing fees or anything else for this?
Everything. Yeah, I think Zoe's on top of that more than I am, so, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, any comments, questions you want to board?
No.
No, okay. Um, I'll open up to public comments, um, there are no members of the public in the room at this time, so a, any members of the public that would like to make a comment online, please use the raise hand feature or come on video or turn your video on and raise your hand. Zoe, I'm not seeing any public comments online, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to close the hearing. If all in favor to close the hearing, please raise your hand. Five zero to close the hearing. Um, Bill, this is the the request is to renew the special permit for a, a, a period of time?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, the, um, renewal period is two years for cell tower. Um, and that would be, uh, the, the one confusion we've always had is, is from the effective date or the date of the vote. Effective date being the date it is appealed, um, I, I mean, the, that is, uh, receives a letter of no appeal. Um, our past practice has been from the effective date of the permit. Um, and then the applicant would be, um, in, in the renewal, uh, cycle. Uh, and, um, come back for renewal in two years.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to to approve the special permit, what's the ten line again, you said two years?
Two years is the maximum our bylaws allow.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for a period of two years from the effective dates. And to find that the applicant is consistent with section seven point five and ten point four of the Maynard Protector Zone bylaws.
Well, second time.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Five zero to approve as noted. Um, thank you, Mr. Peckins, for your time.
Absolutely, thank you all, I hope you have a great evening.
Mr. Peckins, we'll be in touch with you, uh, either Zoe or I will draft up a, as decision. Uh, and when it's recorded with the clerk, uh, we'll provide you a copy, and then you'll be, uh, on the twenty, uh, day appeal period, and from that, then uh, then you'd be, um, uh, and the effective date would commence, so we'll, we'll keep it touching, yeah.
Okay, not a problem, thank you all for your help, have a great night.
Thank you for your, for your complete package. We appreciate.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Okay. Any election chairman, mister? Um, this is, so every year, you need to elect chair and vice chairman.
I nominate Chris Arseneau as chair of the planning board.
Those who need nominated and seconded.
Anybody?
Who was second, I didn't get the second?
Yeah, Jeff seconded.
Okay, Jeff.
Any other nominations? You can nominate if you do, if you technically, or if you. Okay, um, much taken.
Uh, 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 this is the nomination for Chris to be chair, um, all in favor? Chris Arseneau to be chair. All, all, all in favor of Chris, please raise your hand. That is, uh, that is five votes, including our alternate mark, uh, voting for Chris.
Hey. Oh, and, um, um, I will nominate Natalie for vice chair.
Rich man.
Second, all in favor, oh, any other nominations, mister? All in favor, uh, for Natalie as vice chair, here's his vision hand. Four zero, you didn't vote this time?
Okay, congratulations both of you, you've done a great job, and I'm sure we will, uh, appreciate you, uh, serving like this. Our whole group is, is terrific, and I appreciate.
All right, that's enough, thanks. Um, meeting minutes? Are there meeting minutes?
No.
Yeah, there is.
There are.
Well, we're going to, we're gonna table these meeting minutes, we don't have them in front of us.
Oh. Okay, get them for you.
Yeah, I, I think you did attach them in the email, um.
I didn't read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was reading other things.
Okay.
All right.
All right, um, planning board update or planner update?
Debbie?
Just Zoe.
Yeah, on vacation.
All is well.
Go back on vacation.
All is well in the planning room.
Um, I, I don't think that we have anything substantive to bring to the board right now on, I, I think, I think everything's kind of it, it either been an agenda item or and, Bill, do we have any miscellany?
Your bike share, you want to talk about, I think they'd love to hear about that.
Well, it's not ready yet.
We'll tell them.
Well, there's gonna be a bike share.
That's not ready yet.
There's, there are four, there are four.
They're already there.
They're already there, but the sign with the Q R code that tells you how to download the app to rent the bikes has not been installed yet, they're gonna send the guy to install the sign.
The Q, the Q R codes are on bikes.
Yes, if somebody is very clever, um, they can figure out perhaps how to rent the bikes.
You don't have to be that clever, I, I looked at it.
Very, very clever. So, once that's actually in a, in a state where we can do a proper, you know, ribbon cutting and grand opening, we'll do that. Um, and that's a multi, that's an, so inter-municipal, uh, project with Acton and, um, and Concord and Lincoln.
Yes, now, may I be invited to the ribbon cutting?
We'll see. Yes, yes, I think so, but it's all TBD because we're just, we want it to look, to look nice. Yes, yes, I think so, but it's all TBD because we're just, we want it to look to look nice. The sign, the sign.
Okay.
No, 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 it's not a personal. Yeah, but they already had the grand opening for their one in Acton and we wanna, we wanna show them up.
Yes. Yes, no, I just want to look nice for it, that's all I'm saying.
I I think it would be really cool if we could get Chris Beatrice to come down on his penny farthing. I mean, that would be really fun, but we're talking about that, that would be fun, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And the other news is, uh Zoe, are you, was tonight your last uh conservation commission class?
No, I was here.
But I thought earlier, okay, last week, alright.
I've been here all day.
Okay.
Um no, it's, I actually, I had to cancel my my second to last one because I have a conservation commission meeting that night.
Okay, alright.
Um but soon, soon.
Zoe's gonna be certified there too, so good job, good job.
Uh alright, that's all I have.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
One second, Ben.
All in favor to close, please raise your hand. Five zero to close the meeting, thank you to everybody, Bill, I want to mention Johnny.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Bye, thank you for the meeting. Bye, everybody.